City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded June 17, 2019.
At 7 o'clock, we will call the regular Common Council Meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Could we get a roll call, please? Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Eleven present. We do have a quorum. Please join me in standing with our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of announcements. I was just informed today that Detective Tom Ness, who is with the Stevens Point Police Department, for over 23 years, he's been retired for a while, but he passed away earlier this week. So our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. We have Kathy Segalski, who is a long-term employee of the Transit Department, is retiring. Actually, I think she retired earlier this month, June 3. So we thank Kathy for her service to the city. And I received notice that, once again, for the 11th straight running year, I believe, we have been awarded the Bird City, Wisconsin, acknowledgement for implementing sound practices and fostering public education on important bird conservation issues. Not only that, we have been a high-flyer recipient for nine of those 10 years, which is kind of like the gold standard for Bird City, Wisconsin. I want to thank the Audubon Society, especially Dr. Kent Hall, for their work in helping us achieve that high-flyer status. I believe we are the first city in the state to achieve the Bird City, Wisconsin, status. And things that have been going on, they have been working, Audubon Society's been working with MacDill Elementary School, there have been 18 field trips with junior Audubons and teamed up with Schmickly Reserve, which had four field trips this past year. There have been more than $15,000 in donations for various things from the Audubon Society, including the Schmickly Amphitheater and renovation of the Ranger Whiting Ranger Station, junior Audubon programs and scholarships to UWSP students. So thank you very much to the State of Wisconsin for awarding us, once again, Bird City, Wisconsin, status and our high-flyer status. This will go in a frame in my office, as with, we've done with the other ones. The, let's see, item number three, persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item, other than a public hearing, must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any agenda item that did not fill out one of these white pieces of paper? Okay, I think we're in good shape then. Item number four then is any person who wishes to address the mayor for up to three minutes, and council, for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item, we have Liz McDonald. Liz, step to the lectern, please. Name an address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Liz McDonald, 1760 Strongest Avenue. I'm here tonight to address the proposed building and land swap between Portage County and the city. On March 28, there was a public meeting held to discuss that proposal. I didn't attend it, as I hadn't heard about it. However, I did watch the videotape of the meeting, and I don't know if any of you were in attendance or if you watched the video of it, but you may recall, as I did. I don't remember anybody that attended the meeting speaking in favor of that swap. There was pretty strong opposition to it by some pretty significant people from within the community, such as Judge Finn. And I just, I'll get into that a little bit more later. The biggest objection that people had, and my biggest objection, is that the county offices would be moved to a 25-acre site that the city would provide in the city's industrial park southeast of Lands End. The county is proceeding with a resolution on tomorrow evening's county board agenda to approve a designed development for the 25-acre site. I don't think anything has really been approved yet, so I think it's a little premature for them to be moving forward with a plan for that site. My objections also are that there's been insufficient community input on this overall plan. I thought there would be more public meetings for city people, especially after the vocal opposition that was held on, or that was heard at that March 28 meeting. And I've been trying to watch for any notices of meetings, and I really hadn't seen any. I did check with the county Executive's Office today, and they did hold some meetings, but they were noticed in their typical fashion, which is by a memo that's posted on their bulletin board and released. And it was noticed on April 24, and there was a meeting held on Friday night, the 26 of April, and several subsequent to that. And none of them were in Stevens Point. They were in all outline county locations. I think that moving the county offices from downtown will further decimate our central city area. And I know that this council and prior city councils and elected officials and staff have been working to enhance the city core with more housing and economic development. Why do people want to live in the central city area? We're building more housing here. We're saying, "Come and live here." But then we move the facilities that they come here to use or want to live in the central city for, we move those to the outskirts of town. If the courthouse moves east, will the law offices and other supporting functions also move? Brian Formella from Anderson &amp; O'Brien was one of the people that was at that meeting, and he objected to it, the move on behalf of his law firm, or the law firm that he works with. We have other law firms and other businesses in the central downtown area that might also move. And I would think that that would, that could decimate the downtown further, and we sure don't need that. Another thing, and this is not the least of my objections, but in environmental, the environmental aspect of it. This plan contributes to urban sprawl and totally contradicts our supposed effort to be an eco-municipality. We just got a Bird City Award. We're always trying to do things for, to make our city more self-sufficient, more of an eco-municipality. And this would, I think, really fly in the face of that. One more thing, it's going to increase traffic on Highway 10 and Double H. The reason I'm talking to you tonight is to ask you to take a closer look at the swap proposal, get more input from city residents, and especially regarding the provision of land that's going to contribute to urban sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, the speaker's list is exhausted, which brings us to item number five, which is a presentation by Amanda, our Portage County Solid Waste Director. It says manager on your agenda, and I apologize to Amanda for that. I don't know what's, that's my screw-up, I guess, with the typo. But Amanda, why don't you come on up, introduce yourself, and we can see a presentation on Portage County Solid Waste and Recycling. As you know, the city's been pretty diligent about keeping up with the times. We now have recycling carts in our parks. We've started the community compost to try and divert some organic material from the landfill. We're always looking for ways to save us money and save the planet. And Amanda's going to help us with that.
Do you want me to stand here?
That would be awesome, if you can. Is that going to work? Do you need someone to?
I'll just go like this every once in a while.
Okay.
Because I don't have a clicker.
Can we get?
Can work for you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Hired.
President, nice. We have the.
I'm used to working for her.
Yes, thank you.
The day job of the Marathon County Solid Waste Director, working for the Portage County Solid Waste Director tonight.
We collaborate.
We do collaborate. It's wonderful.
Okay, we'll call it that.
All right, thank you for collaborating with me on this presentation.
Just let me know.
I will. So just, my name is Amanda Heffley. I'm the Solid Waste Director for Portage County Solid Waste. Quick background, I do have a bachelor's in waste management from the University of Stevens Point, so it's kind of fun to be back here as not a college student, but as a working professional and mom. I was a recycling specialist in Dunn County for about seven years, and while I was there, I dabbled in recycling superheroism. That was a lot of fun. Go Recyclone. I'm also, I also serve on the Executive Board of Directors for the Associated Recyclers of Wisconsin. I have, I, excuse me, I'm SWANA certified as a recycling manager of systems. I am a fairly active member for the Solid Waste Association of North America, the Badger Chapter, as well as the Wisconsin County Solid Waste Association. I love what I do, and so I really get into my job.
You don't have Recyclone in here, do you?
I don't have Recyclone in there. I thought I'd be a little bit more professional and not put it there.
There is a recycle bin on the computer.
Recyclone's great, but.
Recyclone was my superhero, my counterpart in Dunn County. Anyway, so, Portage County Solid Waste, what we do, we manage approximately 40,000 tons for municipalities like the City of Stevens Point. We do that by having a drop-off for recycling and solid waste for you all to utilize. We also not only do household recyclables and solid waste, but we are also your one-stop hub for disposal of bulbs, ballasts, tires, appliances, batteries, electronics, sharps, confidential shredding, rigid plastics, and the list goes on. So we do a lot more than just have an outlet for your solid waste and recyclables. So, solid waste and recycling collection is a real big bargain. I want to point this out to everybody. If you compare what you pay for your solid waste and recycling to get picked up at your home, compare that to your monthly cellphone bill, compare that to your utilities, or even sending a package overnight in the mail, it's a great bargain. And we do an even better job at hiding that bargain by going out and not being on the tax roll. So we find funding to fund our programs through user fees. You come to our program, you're going to pay to get rid of your own bulb. We're not going to make your neighbor pay that fee. We also go out and we get grants to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Department of Ag, and Consumer Protection. And then we also have a closed landfill that has already had funds put aside to oversee that closure through our long-term care account. That was funded, started back in the early 1980s before the first bag of trash was put into that landfill. Next, please. And as most of you hopefully realize, there aren't garbage fairies that pick this stuff up and just magically make it go away. Next. And so that's where Portage County Solid Waste comes in. We operate and oversee the transfer facility. We send approximately 23,000 tons of trash to the landfill in Wisconsin Rapids each and every day. Next. And then we also oversee the operations of a material recovery facility or a recycling center. There, we process approximately 18,000 to 20,000 tons of recyclables, household recyclables, into saleable commodities each and every year. Next. And we do that by employing approximately 20 employees between two shifts, Monday through Friday. And they both, both shifts work 10-hour days. And do, and they do, they do this through a lot of good old albergries. It's a lot of hand sorting to get that material sorted. So if you put the wrong material in your bin, chances are there's somebody using these beautiful hands to pick it out for you and then putting it in the landfill on your behalf. We do that through a magnet, a couple of screens, and then an eddy current, which acts as a reverse magnet, repelling the aluminum onto another belt. Next. Some of you may have seen, "Oh, my gosh, the sky is falling. Recycling is in crisis mode." Stop. I'm squashing that right here and right now. The sky isn't falling. Recycling is not in crisis. It is just changing. And changing it is. And I do believe we are in a pivotal point right here in recycling's history. We can either read into these headlines and think, "Oh, my gosh, what's the point of recycling?" Or we can change our habits and start recycling better so that we have better commodities to sell to our end users. And that's what I'm going to do here in the next two to three minutes, give you the tools to start recycling right, correctly, at home. Next. So what does it mean to recycle right? It means to pay attention what your municipalities can accept. When in doubt, give me a call or throw it out. Chances are, if you're not sure it can be recycled, it probably can't be recycled. So do us a favor and throw it out on our behalf. Next. So here are your tools. Some proper recycling. Paper, what we can accept is newsprint, unwanted mail. We want your paperback books, your magazines. If you're recycling hardcover books, rip that hardcover off, throw that in the trash, and we just want the paper. Plastic windows and envelopes are okay. You don't have to remove staples or stickers or glue. That's perfectly fine. Please do not recycle paper cups or coffee cups. Not recyclable. No tissue paper, no wrapping paper, no paper plates, no napkins, and please, no Kleenexes. Throw those away. Gross. Cardboard. Empty and always flatten your cardboard. Remove any plastic wrap that happens to be around it. If you get a pack of Gatorade or water bottles and has that plastic wrapper on there, remove that. Take it one step further and take it to a drop-off for proper recycling or throw it in your trash. Please, no packaging, styrofoam packing peanuts. We don't want it. Throw it away. It's not recyclable. No greasy pizza boxes. Rip off the top of that box. Recycle the clean portion. Toss out the greasy part. And no paper cups. And flattening your cardboard boxes is pretty easy. You can do the pick-and-rip method, or you can do the sheer brute strength by ripping that garbage, excuse me, that glue, or you can do the elephant stomp. It's not that hard to stomp your cardboard's flat. Or if all else fails, get a knife or scissors and cut it into size so that we can recycle it properly. Cans, excuse me, glass bottles and jars. Glass bottles and jars only, please. Any color is fine. Please remove your caps. If it's a metal cap, throw it in the garbage. If it's a cork from your wine bottle, throw it in the garbage. We don't want any caps left on our glass bottles and jars. We also do not and cannot recycle window glass. No baking dishes or glass storage containers. Please, no glassware. And also no mirrors or ceramics. Glass is a very finicky stream to recycle. And if there's too much contamination coming in, it can completely negate the whole process. So please, be very gentle with your glass bottles and jars. Steel and aluminum cans. You don't need to take the labels off. Hooray. Empty them out, though, please, and nestle those lids back into the cans before recycling. Here in Portage County, we cannot recycle aluminum foil, aluminum pie, or food tins. No aerosol cans or loose bottle caps. You can take some of those materials to a scrap metal dealer if they can recycle that. A tip for your loose bottle caps, stick those inside of your soup can, nestle that cover back down, and crimp the top, and then it can be recycled. If it's left loose in your bin, it's never going to make it through our two-inch minus screens, and it's going to head out to the landfill. We have two-inch minus screens to get rid of our glass and small components like those that can't make it through the sorting system. Plastic bottles, jugs, and tubs. Please, empty liquids and food out, and if it's a plastic cap, keep it on. Remember, keep like with like. If it's a metal cap on your plastic bottle, nestle it in your tin can. We can't recycle that. So please, no barrier lettuce containers. This is a new one for a lot of you, but it's never been recycled, and it's not going to get recycled if you throw it in your container. Please, no motor oil bottles, no cups, plates, or utensils, including straws. Not recyclable. No toys or laundry baskets. And last but not least, please, no plastic film and bags. Bring those back to a drop-off site for proper recycling. And last but not least, my plug. If you want to learn how to recycle even better, I'll be at the Midwest Renewable Energy Fair on Saturday at 3 o'clock in the black tent. And I will have a 45-minute presentation about how clean, how not clean, tanglers, what's a tangler, all that great stuff. So thank you. One more. I appreciate your time, and if you have any other questions, I would love to answer them. And I have some fancy recycling guides for you all to take home with you today. So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Amanda. That was awesome. You know, and there are some other things we can do. I know we have a very short presentation allotment, but my wife just picked up these funky silicone straws. They're bendable. You can fit them in their own case. Easy to clean and reusable. Straws are not recyclable. You should probably try and avoid straws and excess plastic bags. Reducing our consumption is one of the easiest ways to help save the planet. Reducing, reusing, and recycling. Thank you, Amanda. If anyone has questions, contact her office. You can find it on our website, the county's website, Google Portage County Solid Waste. As a reminder, the handout that's being passed out now to the Alders is also available on our website, as well as the county's website. We do send out recycling information in, I believe, the tax bills, Corey, is that correct? Or is it the water bill?
I believe it's the water bill.
Water bill. Read your bills. That information's out there, but it's also available on our website. Item number three, I'm sorry, item number six is on page three of your packet, and that is the consent agenda. I need us to poll. Item number one, funding for replacement of garbage carts from the June 10 Finance Committee Meeting. Is there anything any of the other Alders would like to poll from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one item polled for further discussion. President Johnson.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the purchase of the garbage cart from the Finance Committee minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Nabel, discussion. Alder Niebon.
I would like to thank the beloved community at Redeemer Lutheran Church on Berluski for consenting to be the new polling place for District 7. They have a wonderful facility with a lot of parking, no problems if the weather's bad. And they have opened their arms to all of District 7 to come and vote. And I would also like to thank Alder Phillips for standing in for me at the Public Protection Committee Meeting the other night. And other than the gray hair and glasses, I don't think anybody will confuse us.
And beard.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the consent agenda. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Niebel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
He caught himself, too. 11-0, that is adopted. The request for funding for replacement of the garbage carts, the reason they had this polled, and I'll let Corey talk about this a little bit as well. We had a few things come up. The contingency fund that we budget is about $100,000. And the motion was made at the Finance Committee to approve the purchase of those additional 90-gallon carts, because we're basically out of 90-gallon carts, out of contingency, rather than waiting to budget for it in 2020. However, since then, our filtration system at the pool, which had been on the capital budget for replacement for the past couple of years, we always had it evaluated and determined that, yeah, we could probably make it a little bit longer. Well, came back and bit us. We had a leak in the filtration system. It didn't completely fail. But we had a leak in the filtration system which caused us to bump back the pool opening day. We're fixing the leak, however, that does not replace the system. It would be my suggestion that we hold off on purchasing the carts, keep contingency right where it's at, because we may need it before the end of summer to replace the filtration system on the pool. As you know, if the filtration system goes down, the pool goes down, and not only are you going to have a bunch of angry kids, but you are also going to have the pool closed with no revenue coming in for however long it takes us to get fixed. So my recommendation would be that we take no action on purchasing those carts. And when fall rolls around, if we can purchase the carts or the filtration system, we consider the contingency at that time, bringing it back maybe in August, unless something weird happens before then. Comptroller, anything to add?[1342.86] when fall rolls around, if we can purchase the carts or the filtration system, we consider the contingency at that time, bringing it back maybe in August unless something weird happens before then. Comptroller, anything to add?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. I think basically we just need a few months to kind of see how things develop, see how the budget develops, and see if we can afford to do both or if we need to do both.
And obviously, if everything goes well, we can budget for both of them in the 2020 capital and not have to worry about contingency, but we don't know at this point. So I would entertain a motion, unless there's any questions, to take no action. How do we have to do this? Do we have to reverse the decision of the Finance Committee or just take no action on the purchase of the carts?
Because Finance did approve it.
Finance did approve it, yeah.
I think that since it's been pulled for separate action, there could be a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, and with regards to that particular item, you could just move to postpone it or?
I would then, since we've already approved the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to postpone till no later than August's meeting. Is that a motion, Alder Phillips?
Yes.
Seconded by Alder Person Nabel. Any discussion there? Everyone keep your fingers crossed, and then if you are in favor of the postponing till August, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. Item number seven is on page 48 of your packet, and that is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 900 Rocky Run Road to construct a concrete wall around the substation and minor equipment upgrades. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Alder Slawinski?
Move approval of that conditional use permit.
Thank you. Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that's adopted. Item number nine is on page 56 of your packet. That's an ordinance amendment regarding Chapter 23, specifically 23.02, tourist rooming houses.
Mr. Mayor?
Director, come on out.
Would recommend one quick change that is outlined in your packet on page 58 regarding the tourist rooming houses. We're proposing that they be permitted use within owner-occupied structure in the lowest residential district, conditional uses within non-owner-occupied. However, we would recommend that they go back to permitted uses once they hit the commercial districts. So if they want to do, let's say, a second-floor tourist rooming house within the downtown area, that it would be permitted. So the way the ordinance is written would allow that, but I just wanted to point that out because that was not discussed at Plan Commission.
Any questions to the Director? President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Estrusky. Is that related to the note that's in the sidebar of this?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because it seemed like it should be in its final form, but this just is, to provide clarification?
It is. So when I put this in there as a note, I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the change.
Thank you.
So we would be willing to entertain a motion to accept the ordinance amendment as presented. Is that a motion by Jennings, seconded by Nabel? Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that's adopted. Page 59 will give us item number 10, and that is an ordinance amendment for 9.05 Sub-AK parking limits, kind of clearly defining what we mean by the two-hour zone and when that is appropriate and when it's not. President Johnson?
Move to approve the ordinance, I'm sorry, the changes on the ordinance related to parking.
Thank you. Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that's adopted. Item number 12 is a developer's agreement for TID 5 regarding Stevens Point Student Housing LLC Development, the project at 111 Division Street North. Director, anything to add?
Is there any questions?
You, Alder Jennings?
Move to approve the development agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Alder Dalton?
I would just like to say on the record that I will not be voting to approve this agreement. I have concerns about the but-for conditions and the viability of this project fitting in with our city's stated, stated goals. The first being that whether or not there is a need for student housing, and with the primary target being student housing, I think that the university should really take ownership and leadership for that, and it's not in the city's role to necessarily sponsor with financial incentives. Secondly, I have concerns about this sort of development isolating young people and young professionals rather than integrating them into the neighborhoods in our community. And so specifically, this development, I think, and the housing there really doesn't do much to help these young people and students coming into our community to feel integrated as a citizen. Second, or third, if the developers, financiers question the viability of this project, I do think that a newer and bigger project will not necessarily solve that plan, and so I think that it's at least questionable for the city to contribute financially to this. And I think our time and resources continue to be better spent on smaller projects with resident developers, as we've seen a few in the last years, but really focusing on that. So I will be voting against this this evening, and I will be, I guess, highly scrutinizing more of these TIF developments as they come forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. Item number 13 is an authorization to retain Dietrich Vanderwall to assist in responding to an appeal of the Board of Zoning Appeals decision by Kent Wurzella filed in the Portage County Circuit Court as case number 19-CV-142. Attorney, anything to add?
Just a really quick overview here. This is an appeal from a decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a process for that established under statute. Attorney Dykman with this firm had advised the board itself at the stage of this where the board was hearing and deciding on this. She's very familiar with it, and the plan here would be for she and I to work together on responding to this appeal. I think that the quality of work I've seen from her on other matters related to zoning has been very good, and I think that this is a worthwhile use of funds.
I have a question.
President Johnson?
I just, when I probably should have asked you when I saw you earlier, but just clarification now, my department has Dietrich Vanderwall under retainer for a number of things that they work on. There's no conflict, is there, to vote on this?
I don't believe that that would be a conflict.
Okay.
I certainly don't think that that would be a conflict in any way for you personally. Probably the party involved that would be scrutinizing that the most closely would be the Dietrich Vanderwall firm itself in terms of its own internal conflicts control, and they haven't said anything to me about that in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay. You looking for a motion? Alder Dalton?
Motion to authorize the retainer of Dietrich Vanderwall to assist in this court case.
Thank you. Seconded, seconded by Alder Person Phillips. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call, please.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?